Welcome to the Board of Education's Work Session. May I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that we move into closed session pursuant to the general provision Article 3-305 and 3-104. I move to go into closed session to discuss an administrative function, to consider matters that relate to negotiations, and to consult with counsel.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. We will be back in approximately eight minutes. Thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of Education Work Session. Please stand and repeat the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll continue with the budget presentation. This line graph is all yours.
Okay. I believe the last time we met, we were going through the budget book. We stopped on page 11. I don't know if you want to pick up there. In the meantime, I have sent out information regarding what each of the increases in the budget are, and it's a very brief explanation as to what those increases were.
Right.
So, do we want to just march through the budget book? And...
I think so. Is everybody on board with that?
There is a... There is a... Okay. So, we left off on page 11, which was mid-level administration. I think we completed our discussion on this, on the assistant principals. We can move forward.
Yes.
On page 12, the only increase that we have there is in mileage and travel, which I think we've discussed several different times. And that's essentially it for mid-level administration.
I had a question on, was it mid-level? Hold on, let me just double check. Nope, it's not. Never mind. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Then we go into instruction, and of course, this is where the meat of the budget is. So, I anticipate a lot of questions and conversation regarding this. The first item on page 14 is teachers, full and part-time. We have requested eight additional positions. And they are, one at Kennard Elementary School, one at Ken Island Elementary School, an English Language Arts at Stevensville Middle School, a math at Centerville Middle School, a computer teacher at Queen Anne's County High School, and an English Language Arts slash social studies at Queen Anne's County High School.
So, two of those we've cut out. So, we've resolved the issue at Stevensville, so you can eliminate that one. And we've resolved the issue at Kennard, so we can eliminate that one.
What was the one in between those? Kennard, what was second? I'm sorry, I missed it before Stevensville. Ken Island Elementary School.
Ken Island, okay.
So, now we're down to four positions?
And so, we started with eight? Is that correct?
We started with eight.
Why did I have six down?
Well, we had six originally, and then we added two for the Virtual Academy.
Gotcha. Okay.
Can I just...
So, we're back to six.
Where is that? On my book. Page 14, correct?
We're on page 14. It's the first item there.
Okay.
We have 522.68 positions, and included in that are these eight positions.
Okay. And under that is, is that under classroom teachers? We're taking two off?
Yes.
Okay. And what does that reduce?
Each position is in here. Well, it's $60,000 on this particular line, $60,000 each, but then there's also a residual effect that's going to happen back in fixed charges with health insurance and all the payroll taxes and whatnot. So, it ends up working out to be overall reduction in the budget, about $80,000.
Per...
Per each teaching position.
Okay. And we eliminated two. So, I'm just trying to keep track. So, 160. Okay.
All right. So, I'm sorry to be redundant. We took care of Kennard. We still have Ken Island Elementary on the table. We took care of Stevensville. We still have Centerville Middle. We still have a computer teacher at Queen Anne's County High School, and an English slash studies teacher at Queen Anne's County High School. What two am I missing?
And then the two for the Virtual Academy.
Oh, Virtual Academy. I'm sorry. That's, thank you very much.
Okay. And since when we were talking about mid-level administration, we decided that we were not going to be moving the teacher specialists to assistant principals. Those will come back into this line item. And then also, the APA program manager will come back into this line item.
What do you mean, we come back in?
Because it was taken out because they were making them, the assistant principals, teacher specialists. So, they took out teacher specialists.
Oh, out of this location?
Yeah, and then moved it.
But the bottom line is...
So, this has teacher specialist four. So, what are we doing? We're going back to 12?
It will go back to 12.
12, okay.
Yes. So, I'm just curious, how did you solve the two teachers that you took off the list?
Within?
You mean, the Kennard and Stevensville?
The Kennard, how did you solve the Kennard and Stevensville?
Because Kennard has a sort of a STEM lab kind of a situation. That position was originally a PE or some cultural arts request, but they ended up using it in that way. That doesn't have to be, because the standards that are taught in that class are now in the science curriculum.
Oh, okay.
So, that teacher position can go back to fill the need for the one that she requested. So, we're even there. Stevensville, they had a teacher who was minimally, who had low class numbers in a particular class. And that position, or that class, is going to be eliminated. And so, that position can be used to fill the vacancy that is being requested.
Okay. So, you're filling up the need that you had.
Exactly. Reallocating.
Okay, great.
So, the computer teacher that would be added would be in addition, and it would help with the pathway being equitable at Queen Anne's County High School versus Ken Island High School?
Not necessarily. I mean, we are asking for that. Isn't that the same, the computer science? So, if that doesn't happen, what my job was to do is, in the event that we could not get the position, because it's been requested for a number of years, is to figure out how to make it happen with the positions that we currently have.
Right.
And so, we have done that if we need to do that.
Right, right.
But my point in my last conversation about this was that those teachers who are certificated to teach computer science are already teaching full loads of something else.
Right.
And so, that's going to create a bit of juggling in the schedule. And I don't know what the outcome is going to be of that, but the bottom line is that we need to offer computer science, and we have the ability to do that.
Right.
Not exactly sure of the fallout. Have to get with the principal on whatever other courses those teachers are currently teaching.
Right.
And this will be for all four grades at the high school, or just our freshmen?
No, no, no. This is for...
Anyone can come into it even as a senior? Okay.
I think that we've already said that that was on the agenda, to do that.
Right. I mean, and that should be included in our budget.
That should be included in the budget for that teacher.
Oh, yeah. We could definitely fight that.
Because that is already down to Ken Island High School.
Right.
And that's what parents are claiming.
Absolutely.
And so, I'm all for putting that teacher definitely to Queen Anne's County High School.
My question about adding a teacher is the virtual school, because I knew we had a conversation about maybe not doing it this budget session. Is it, did we ever decide if we were going to go ahead with that or not? Like, that's what I was, I'm confused on.
No, we did not decide that we were going to go ahead with that. I think that the position you were in last time is that you really wanted some more homework done on that.
Okay.
And we could, you know, have some conversation about that and move forward in the next request.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, okay.
So, I mean, you know, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but...
No, no.
Those could be two positions that you decided not to fund.
Right.
Right. And that we could, then we have a spot for that high school teacher and one of the other ones, so...
And if we didn't fund those, we'd be down to one, two, just a request of four, correct?
Yes.
So, that takes away the whole Virtual Academy request.
Right. If we decide, yeah. Because it shares up multiple places, like the materials of instruction and everything.
Yeah.
And...
Okay. The next area is instructional assistants and tutors. And what I have included here, there's a $47,000 increase, and we were looking at trying to improve the hourly rates on the tutors, minority achievement coordinators, the life skills instructors, well, both ESOL reading and math tutor. So, there's a $14,000 increase for that in here, and then there's salary improvements for the rest of the school systems that are in this area of the budget.
So, 14 is, that's the only thing that's, of the 47?
14, 750 of the 47 is for hourly wage improvements.
Changes in wages, okay.
Yes. And then substitutes, all of this, all $60,000 of this would be for hourly wage improvements.
All 60?
Yes. And we were looking at, that was looking at increasing by a dollar an hour for each of the different, depending on what their certification was.
So, this does not include the, anything to do with the sick leave addition? The new sick leave law?
No. This is just the hourly rate. So, the lowest hourly rate right now, I think we're paying is 1125.
Right.
And so, this would increase each, so it's 1125, 1225, depending upon your education. So, this would increase it to 1225, 1325.
Right.
And the salary improvement steps in COLA is what the impact will be after we would grant the 14,000 on top of?
Well, substitutes hardly aren't included in...
No, no.
For that particular line item where it says 33,000 for salary improvement, there are 27 and a half people in that category, so that will be the salary improvement.
Okay, that's what I was making sure of.
That will be their steps in that COLA.
Okay. What's the going, just quickly, going rate on substitutes, like around our, like Anarundel, Talba, around our county? About, what is the substitute rate?
Well, we know that everyone is slightly higher than we are, and now it's not just what they're getting as substitutes. It's the fact that Walmart just increased to $11 an hour. I mean, it's, it's a, you know, Hardee's is $12 an hour. So, we're struggling to get people to come in for substitute jobs and five-hour pair of jobs and all of that. So, and they're all, everyone's preparing to increase their rates. So, we're just trying to hold the line with this increase.
With a dollar increase?
So, the base, the lowest substitute cost, it used to be 1050, I thought, when I was doing it. What is the lowest substitute?
11 and a quarter.
Oh, it is. The lowest is 11 and a quarter. Okay.
But minimum wage goes up July 1st to 1010.
Right.
So, you know, we've tracked all this, and we know we're just holding the line.
Okay. So, that substitutes, the next line item there is secretarial and clerical. And we had some changes in positions where people who had some experience left, and that's why this is a decrease. But there, I do have built in here, excuse me, for those nine people, that there are steps in there.
So, that would be kind of like their attrition, we're getting the 8,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. And then other instructional positions, this is where we have our home hospital, our extra-duty mentors, those types of activities. And we need to increase this, and this was based on, we have a $30,000 increase in here. 30,000 of that is for hourly rate improvements, mostly for the home hospital teachers, because we're having a terribly difficult time getting home hospital teachers. And then a little bit of salary improvement for the .2 person that's included in this area.
And I think it's important to note, especially in everything, and it's not always the case, our actual spending in 2017 was considerably higher than what our request for 2019 is even close to. So, we took a cut from 17 to 18. And we may be asking for an increase in 19, but it's nowhere near what it was two years ago.
And so, the other thing that we have to remember is that even if we are funded at maintenance of effort, which is whatever, you know, based on the number of students, that's level funding, but the cost of doing business continues to increase.
Absolutely.
And so, we function at a deficit right off the bat.
Yes.
When we are only funded at maintenance of effort.
Yes.
I have a little video that I'm going to share with you that I think is going to be beneficial to the public if they see how that works.
Right, right. It's a $200,000 difference in a two-year period of time, what we're asking as opposed to what we used to get. That's huge.
Do you, you used to have a slide, and I was trying to find it in your presentation, on basic cost of doing business that you can't do anything about, like, like the healthcare was on there. And I looked at that, but I didn't see the other things, which is the cost of the contracts that went up. Did you have a slide just on that? I meant to ask you if it did. I mean, I didn't see it in your presentation.
We did not.
Because that's a bottom-line number we can't do anything about. We have to pay. I see license agreements under something, but that's under new requests. This is in your presentation.
Right. I thought that there was a slide. Trying to find the presentation.
Well, I'm sorry to call it on you now. I just...
That's okay.
Because you said healthcare's gone up. That's a definite...
Healthcare went up, right.
We have to pay that. The consortium fee went up. We have to pay that.
Presentation here real quick.
It's down January 31st.
Right. We had, and I think it is...
Not just based on the five-year trend.
Right. This is slide 33 in the presentation, shows where the estimated costs were, what the cost of a step was, what the cost of a 1% increase. It also had the healthcare, and we anticipate that's a 4.5% increase for active employees. That was going to be 705,000. And for retirees, it was going to be 150.
So, that all comes out to about $1 million is what, if you add all that?
We're probably close to 3 million dollars.
Oh, I mean, starting just at the healthcare. I'm just talking about the...
The healthcare's $850,000.
Right. 85, so, that's what I'm saying, that just those items are $1,400,000, not any salary increases or anything like that.
Right. And then you have the bus contractors.
Yes, including...
Which is based on CPI, which actually isn't out yet. It's supposed to be out today or tomorrow. I had estimated that at 2%. That was another $100,000. The Midshore Special Ed Consortium was another $20,000, so...
Your estimate on the sick leave bill to 60?
Right, 60,000.
And just for the public, that's about a little over $1 million in stuff we absolutely have to pay. You didn't have any contracts as far as like seat, computer contracts, and none of that has gone up, as far as you know? These are bills that will come due, no matter what?
Yeah. So, we absolutely have license agreements that we currently pay for academic program. Well...
That's what I was wondering. Things that are going to be more than what we, when we argue the, over MOE, we need over the MOE.
Oh, we absolutely do.
We'll need to know that, those numbers.
That's right here. That's right here. We have that as a line item, what we expect will be our charges. And again, it's just a good 80,000 less than it was two years ago. I mean, we have to really be cognizant of what we've actually spent two years ago. That was an actual amount. We were at a disadvantage last year because of funding deficit and had to cut back. Some of our increases are not even bringing us up to the spending level we were at two years ago. So, we can't confuse every spending increase, especially when it's not even back to where it was two years ago. But we have to be cognizant that in the big scheme of things that goes into the pot, but it's not necessarily an increase from where we were spending two years ago.
Yeah.
And how that gets portrayed to our powers that be, I'm not clear.
We can use that as a discussion point, but I'm, just think what, what we can solidly defend is anything that we know is going to be extra. So, just in the course of things, I kind of need to know that, that number, the bottom-line number.
What's extra and what's mandatory?
What's required, bills we're going to have to pay that are increased from our MOE of last year. That way, we can justify additional MOE.
And keeping salary aside from that, or a part of that?
We know, we know what that might be.
We know that's an increase. We know that, yeah.
Just other than salary.
Okay. So, we have two items there that we know will increase.
And you used to call that the cost of doing business.
Yeah.
Frank Gregg and all that.
Yeah.
Okay. That'll be helpful.
I can put that together.
Okay. That's okay with you, Dr. Kane?
Yes, me too. The next line item in the budget is staff development activities. And essentially, there's only two things that we increased here, and that was the hourly rate for our curriculum rating. Currently, we pay $21.50 an hour for staff to come in and do curriculum writing, which compared to our colleagues across the state is apparently very low. And then the other is for mentors, and we've requested $35,000 additional in mentors.
How many mentors do we have?
16, I think, right?
Yeah, but they service a lot of people, because essentially, for the first three years that a person is a teacher, they have a mentor assigned to them.
Right. But that's how many mentors we have is 16.
Yeah, I think we have 16.
I was wondering that. I think you had said something about it before, and I couldn't remember.
Yes. And most of them are retired teachers.
Right, exactly.
And they'll service, you know, four or five.
Exactly. Schools and...
Different teachers.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And then we pay for school improvement teams? Is that because they meet hours? Is it the summer's meetings, or is during summer?
Both. Some of them, they meet in the evenings after school hours, and then generally, they have a big meeting during the summertime to work on their school improvement plan.
Does a teacher have a mentor after they're tenured? Or is it, is that, I was understanding that a teacher had a mentor until they're tenured? Is that...
Right. It's for the first three years, when they're, when they're a novice teacher. They just come to us, and it takes them three years to be tenured now.
Which is required by law. Which is required by law.
But is it required by law to use retired teachers? I mean, is there any way to use, like, if I was starting out teaching, it would be, I think, more conducive to have maybe a teacher in the same school, you know, to be able to bounce things off of, plus they're up on the current things, and they know the kids in the system on how to like work with a grade. I mean, is there any way that it would be cost savings, instead of adding more retired mentors, that we could maybe do, you could do like a mentor stipend for, in school?
So, lots of principals, I did it as well. As a principal, you'd use the people in your building to sort of informally mentor. But to meet the qualifications of this statute...
It's too rigorous. Okay, gotcha.
Because you'd have to do during the day. And during the day, I'm teaching when you're teaching.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, that explains it then. Okay.
But there's no, there's no requirement in law that they have to be retired.
Right. Gotcha.
Okay. And that's it for the salary part of the instructional program. Do they have any other questions regarding that? Okay. Moving on to page 15, consultants. We have increased our request for consultants, and part of that is due to PVA, having experts come in and be able to teach whatever program it is. I think most of this has to do with the new science curriculum. And then the other part is for the Virtual Academy. There's $50,000 in there for the Virtual Academy, or not quite 50 consultants for that.
So, majority of it is the virtual?
About 10,000 is for the consultants for the PVA.
Do we have a bottom-line amount that if we did not approve the Virtual Academy for this cycle, what that would take out of the budget? Or do I need to just go back and edit it up myself?
We do.
It's in there.
You got 50, yeah, actually.
On that, it's 50.
21 or something?
We got it on that one slide that was in the presentation.
291.
291, yeah.
Yeah, 291.
And this would be included in that, that 50?
Yes, if we, if we take all that out.
Okay. Thank you.
But I know, I thought, maybe, I'm just trying to put things in the puzzle together, but an investment in a Virtual Academy would be an increase in revenue, because we would have more pupils coming in. Is that kind of a thinking?
Well, that's an assumption.
An assumption, okay.
Right. And that actually would be something that would happen the year after.
Right. So, it'd be an investment now, but it would be that...
I did have a question about that, the Virtual Academy, because you talked about revenue coming in from homeschool students. Would homeschool students then, if they applied to be part of the Virtual Academy, would that, would that mean that they would now have to take all of the state testing that is required? Because I'll tell you, what worries me is many, many, many homeschool parents left the system due to testing. So, I'm not sure we're going to create that revenue that you're hoping for.
So, it would be the same as our own students, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, we test them, but if a parent is choosing to not allow their child to test, then they wouldn't.
It wouldn't be mandatory from the state if they're back into the school system?
And counted.
They could graduate and not have to take those tests.
So, the bottom line is that, just like our own students, and we have some parents who, you know, reserve this right.
Opt out.
And I don't want to formally say opt out, because that really is not the proper language. But if they elect to not allow their child to participate in testing, then that is their choice.
But wasn't there, isn't some of the testing required to graduate?
For high school students, we know HSA is...
I thought you had...
HSA is a graduation requirement.
So, if they would, so if they would elect out, then they couldn't graduate from the homeschool program?
That's right.
But what I'm saying is, so then if they elected out from the testing, they wouldn't graduate from our Virtual Academy?
If it is a graduation requirement, then it's required to get a diploma from Queen Anne's County Public Hospital.
Okay. So, that's my main concern with bringing revenue in from homeschool parents, because that was, I know many homeschool parents, I am not speaking for all of them, or, but that is usually a point of contention of why they went homeschool, was because of the testing.
Sometimes it is.
So, that just is, but that just concerns me with, we don't want to assume that we're going to get a ton of homeschool parents if they know those reasons, because it might be a reason they wouldn't come. So, that's just my...
And it just, you know, it just depends.
And that'll be part of the study, I'm assuming.
Right, exactly. Sometimes it's religious purposes, sometimes it is health purposes. It's a variety of things. things. Again, you know, I had over 1,100 students in Virginia.
Sure.
Some took the test, some didn't take the test. Most of them did.
Yeah.
It just.
Were you county there or district?
State. It was open to anybody in the state.
Oh, okay, okay.
I do have a question, too. When we then realize the additional student for MOE purposes, are we then, are we then required to have them meet our requirements at that point? I mean.
That's what my.
Absolutely. Just like any other student.
Okay, so, they will?
Because we would get funding from federal and state.
And the understanding is that they're going to?
That they're going to do those testing, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But, that's when the parent comes in as to whether or not they're going to opt in or not to the virtual academy.
Right.
For various reasons, not just that, but a big one.
Okay. Okay. The next line item is software licenses and training, and this, we show a large increase, but as Mrs. Harlow has said, if you look back to what we actually spent in prior years, we're right on target where we have been.
Yeah, I think you explained that somewhere in something that, we took it from year-end money, is that right?
Right, what we've been doing the last, I'm going to say, four or five years anyway, is at the end of the year, we try to buy those licenses ahead, and at some point in time, that's going to catch up with us.
Catch up, that's right, that's right.
And I'm afraid that that might be this year.
But, yeah.
So, we really need to get that item in the budget so that we're able to pay for those software licenses.
It's one of those things that would be a cost of doing business to me.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we can't have the going online without the licensing agreement.
Right.
What would be the point?
The commissioners are very good about giving us the computers, so we need the software to do that.
Remind them the cost.
So, we have, currently, we have $70,000 on that line. When we add up what the cost of all those licenses is, it's about $380,000, so we, 310, 332 is for those license agreements, and then, the remainder of that is for the virtual Onto materials of instruction, we're only requesting $48,000 increase, and all of that is dealing with the virtual academy. Okay. Do we want to break Neil for lunch? It is almost 12:30, and then start back.
It's fine with me.
That's fine with me, that.
So, we'll be back at what time?
Um, 1:00? That's enough time to eat, isn't it? Okay, we'll be back at 1:00 PM then. Thank you, and welcome back to our board meeting, work session, and we're going to start with, where did we finish off? Ms. Robin?
Okay, and we're going to start on page sixteen, and essentially, we're going to move through this a little more quickly, and if you don't have any questions on any particular page, then we're just going to move forward. So, page sixteen, there's only a couple increases. Are there any questions? Uh, nope.
I did one question. Your estimate to enrollment will go up, don't they?
Right, I think at the last board meeting, we had a presentation by Mr. Tully about the early college academy, and that is what we're expecting the increase to be for that. And page seventeen, we only have one increase there for equipment.
And that was for all schools?
Yes, we constantly have a problem with, we need to replace cafeteria tables, we need some new furniture for a classroom, those kinds of things, and we really don't have any money.
Our warehouse is empty.
Right, warehouse is empty.
That's just a compilation.
Takes us over to special ed. Page nineteen, we have several increases there.
I did have a question on nineteen. It was the change in personnel, it was 150,000, 552, what was, what is that?
That is in, for teachers, we had a change in personnel. Basically, we had some very senior teachers that retired.
Again, this is attrition, then?
Attrition, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
What line is that on?
Line, the third line down, teachers, full and part-time. You see, we had a decrease.
Okay.
We had some very senior teachers that left last year.
Great.
Okay, go ahead.
I had a question about where it says, it's special ed salary improvement steps cola 141, 334, is that for a new, see, I don't see it on here, but I have it on my.
It's a combination. If you look at the spreadsheet that I sent you that had page nineteen.
That's what I'm looking at, that's why I see that.
Yeah, there's $150,000 negative, which is the attrition number.
Okay.
And then, the positive, 141, which would be the salary increase for the step, right.
And that's for the 78.13 teacher?
Employees, yes.
Employees, okay.
Yes, and then, the net of those two is that negative.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to, I wanted to check.
Right. Instructional assistance, we did include some improvements for the hourly rate in there. Any other questions on those? Carrie, if you have a question, please jump in. Okay, then over to page twenty, there's only the one increase there for the mileage rate.
And is, are we changing the mileage rate because you said something about the rate had gone up?
Yes, the federal government has changed.
Federal government, okay, I thought you did.
And that's what most of our increases are reflected on, yes.
For the mileage, yes.
Not just new spending, just increased doing business.
Right, it went up a penny a mile by the federal government.
And we're required to follow that.
Right, and we stay pretty close to that every time, too. We don't overspend that, my understanding has been.
We are not required to follow that, but that has been our past practice, that we have always followed whatever the federal rate was. All right, and then, over to page twenty-one, non-public placements, and we talked about this before, this is just the number of kids that we have and the special ed consortium.
That would, to me, would be one of those.
Cost of doing business, yeah.
Yes.
We don't have any say-so in it.
I will, no.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
No way to gauge it, no way to know when it's going to change, we just have to do our best to guesstimate.
Right, and basically, the students that we currently have in placement are middle school age students, so I anticipate unless the families move out of the area, that we will have them to continue for next year.
Now, do we continue to support them until they're 21, just like we do our special ed groups here that stay in the county until they're 21?
I am going to say special ed students, we're required to support until 21.
We're required to support if they finish before then, but by law, till 21, but if they finish before then.
Even our out-of-county students that we transport for.
So, they're our students that we transfer outside.
Okay, great, thank you.
Depends on their program and how they're expected to graduate or leave school.
Gotcha, they can be with us till they're 21.
But, when they get their, say, just a certificate.
Then they're done.
They're done.
Okay.
Some will get it at eighteen, some will get it at nineteen.
Gotcha.
But, we have till 21 by law.
All right. Okay, any other questions on special ed? Then, we'll move to student personnel services, and there's essentially nothing in here except wages, salary increases for steps and scales.
Yeah, I didn't remember a homeschool coordinator. Oh, it's not an increase, it's what we have now. Right, nevermind.
Which brings us to health services. And I think the last time we met, we talked about nurses for APA, and that's the only increase with, other than the salary increases.
That's included in this?
Yes, ma'am.
It was.
It says we're school nurses, it says fifteen, it's only fourteen.
Right.
It's 56,034.
And was the 56 her salary?
Yes.
Well, that's both the her, the additional.
Increase for the current ones and her new salary, okay.
Correct, correct, and the new salary was put in there at $35,000.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Versus fifty, it was before, correct?
Fifty-six.
But then, oh, okay, okay, so, it's at thirty-five, and then, the salary improvement step cola for all the other nurses, correct?
Right.
Okay, okay, okay.
Right, but you have to remember, when I put that number up there before, that included all the fixed charges, so when we get back to the part of the budget that deals with payroll taxes and health insurance and everything, there'll be a deduction there.
They are also.
Because if this position is taken out of the budget.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay?
So, the 55 is the entire cost of the person?
Right, 35 salary, and then, you do the health insurance and the workers' comp, unemployment, all that. Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions on health services? Which moves us over to transportation. There is an additional person requested in transportation, that will be a new driver trainer, and that will be one of the positions at the end of last year, we cut out of the budget when we were trying to make ends meet. And then, as far as drivers and bus assistants, we have had to add additional positions in the current year because of our non-public placements, so they would carry forward into the next year also.
How much is the increase for the driver trainer?
Fifty?
Uh, fifty thousand.
And really, we're just kind of putting that back, we used to have that, we had to take it out.
I have a question. Under bus contractors, is that June 30th, 2012, or?
Where are you at?
Right here on page twenty-eight.
Oh, here.
That needs to be corrected.
I was wondering.
Yeah, because our contract, our current contract, initially, we signed a two-year contract, and then, we gave it a one-year extension, so it goes through June 30th of nineteen.
Correct, 2019.
I will make that correction. And then, that increase there is based on the CPIU, which actually isn't out yet, but I've estimated it's at 2%, so hopefully, in the next day or so, I don't know whether, how close I was. Any other questions in transportation? Did increase the insurance, but that's, we've got numbers from May as far as the group insurance pool, so that's where those numbers came from. Okay, which brings us to operations. Brings us over to page thirty-two, we have salary increases there, there are no additional positions requested in this area. Let's see, salary increases.
That's not included in, for those maintenance positions?
They're in the next section under maintenance.
So, 41, 126 is for the 64 positions?
Yes. And there's actually, the salary improvement's actually a little bit higher than that because there was some change in personnel, so we had some attrition.
Okay.
That also played into that, so about 77,000 is going to be the overall steps and cola increases in that area. And then, the overall, on page thirty-three, we've requested an increase in custodial supplies, and I think Mr. Pinder's talked to us about that before with green supplies that were now required to use, again, mileage rate, and then, the increase in insurance based on May group insurance rates.
That's a cost of doing business?
Yeah.
That needs to be changed.
Yes, and then, on page thirty-four, we've requested an increase in equipment, and that's basically just to continue to replace floor equipment.
Backings.
Backings, garnishers.
Buffer for Mattapeak, thank you.
I got a grant for that.
Okay, good. So, Mattapeak is down, one of their machines, so they are scrubbing by hand. Okay, and then, that brings us over to maintenance. We have requested two additional maintenance staff. We have not added two our maintenance staff since we built Kent Island High School, and we have certainly added additional square footage to our facilities over that period of time, so.
But, didn't Kent Island come before the Mattapeak complex?
Yes, it was about 17 years ago was the last time we were able to add maintenance personnel.
How much is that per?
So, we have, we have nine workers, including Jim.
What's the cost of two staff members?
Basically, what I would like to do is, one, hire another electrician, and another, I've written as carpenter but slash locksmith. I can tell you that just in the past five years, there's been 100% increase in tickets for the electrician part of it, because now you have the.
So, that's.
Interactive boards, the LCD projectors, those things, and I mean, it's just, that's a lot for one person with 100% increase. And then, with all the security cameras, access controls and all for the doors, I mean, figure you got 7,700 kids walking through the doors every day, I mean, I could have one person just do doors, period. I mean, and don't get me wrong, the guys are doing a great job, it's just, it's a lot, and we're done the robust period of big construction, now it's time to maintain the facility, so I'll put that request in for that.
Yeah, you can go back and ask. It's an operation, so we're still.
Yeah. Okay, and then, the rest of what's in salaries under maintenance is just the salary increases, the steps and cola.
And why do we look for our maintenance contracts to increase 35,000 over the 60 we approved last year?
You're talking about the last, the last line in there, that was the new floor finishes that were required to use?
They do not admit as many VOCs, you know, what you're breathing in, but there is also a significant cost increase with that, to do that.
Why wasn't that listed?
Contract, you're talking about contract.
I'm talking about maintenance contracts down at the bottom, 35,000.
Yes.
Service companies, equipment, PA system, fire alarms, elevators, I get all that.
So, anyway, part of it's cost of doing business, but also, say, we hire a company to do our gym floors, they, you know, come in, take them down to the wood, rebuild them back up, and when, they want you to go to a water-based.
I get that, I just wondered why that wasn't included in the list, the gym floors.
I will include.
I know, we talked about it, I thought it was somewhere else.
Yeah, no, I can include that in the list.
Gotcha.
Well, actually, it is.
I thought it was included in the green sheet.
If you look on the sheet that you sent us.
In the green?
Right.
It's right here, it says new gym floor finishes.
Right.
Yeah, but I'm looking off the budget book.
Oh, okay, okay.
It doesn't list it down here under the description, so, yeah, so, I will include that as part of the description.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
And the only other thing under maintenance was some additional equipment, and again, that's just replacing and trying to keep up with the equipment that these gentlemen.
Now, what's the difference between equipment and capital versus equipment in, that we're putting in or operating?
The equipment on the capital side, we talked about, years ago, we used to phase it in, you know, have a sheet, so say, like, 2019 came along, we knew that this had to be switched out, and then, when the budget crunch team and all that went to the wayside, we're trying to get back on that track.
So, we don't have to go to the commissioners to transfer money all the time?
Exactly, exactly. So, with the capital funding, you know, and getting that put into place, it will alleviate all of that, and it would also alleviate us relying on the fund balance in case we have a terrible year, you know, a cold year with, you know, if heating will, we'll be back up to par. Like I said, we still have some vans that are 1988, I mean, you know.
Aren't we in this spot now with power? I just got my power bill and I'm about fainted.
I will tell you, when you look at your electric bill and look at the average degree days from last year to this year, and you're looking at, on some of them, about 10 degrees, that's a substantial difference.
What happened to our solar that we were going to be putting in?
I had to ease that a couple months ago.
Actually, it's coming along.
Is it, okay.
I was just talking with them this morning, yep. I'd say probably in the latter part of spring.
Okay, that's good, wow.
We had to work through some issues. It's the first solar in the town of Centerville, so we had to go through some hurdles to get the ordinance.
And in what?
First solar industrial-sized one in the town of Centerville.
Is that going to do, that'll do Queen Anne's County High School and Centerville Middle School?
That will do Queen Anne's County High School, Centerville Middle School, and we'll have enough to do some net metering off of another school, probably Kent Island High School, because that's one of our larger consumers. And I mean, there's no escalation clause on this contract, so I mean, it stays flat the entire 20-year commitment.
Yeah, that's great.
That is great, yeah.
I'm just curious, where is it located?
Do you know where the tennis courts are?
Or which?
I'm sorry, between Centerville Middle School and Queen Anne's County High School.
Yes, okay.
Okay, behind there is like a little hill of five acres that we've had, like, soybeans planted on that we're making like maybe $100 a year off of. I mean, this is going to substantially cut down our cost on electricity with this, so it's a site, it's actually a really good site, we're going to have vegetation around it, so it doesn't stick out like a, you know, kind of a sore thumb, so we've been working with the town, planning and zoning for that also. It's a good project.
Not too much planning. Got to make sure that the sun gets to it.
Well, yes. Very true. But yeah, to answer your question, Captain Kelly, you will see some increases in electric for this, this past month. And you can really look at the ones and tell that are geothermal compared to the ones that have boilers.
I have geothermal and solar, and I was, it went, my tower doubled for this, this weather. And I immediately thought the school system, how lame is that?
I will say, we had no problems with frozen pipes. We had one issue at Graysonville Elementary School, and that was a construction issue. But, I mean-
As cold as it was, we were really lucky.
As cold as it was, and we're compared to other school systems, we're very fortunate.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on maintenance? And we move over to fixed charges. A majority of these numbers are calculated based on what salaries are included in the budget. So retirement costs, we get a number from the state that tells us what that's going to be, what our normal cost is going to be. And then there's also, in addition to the normal cost, there's also an administrative fee. Social Security is calculated, workers' comps calculated. Health insurance would be the biggest number there, which is a, we're estimating a 4.5% increase in health insurance. And then for all the additional staff that was initially included in this budget, included them at, at a family plan level. So we'll be able to reduce that.
So who does, who, who sees that increase? Is that going to be half to us and half to the teachers, or the whole 4.5 is, is on us? Us as being the Board of Education?
Both. To pay the increase?
Both. For EPO individual, currently, we pay 100% of that cost. So for that group of employees-
And how many, how many do we have doing that?
255, I think, was the last number. Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay.
So we pay 100% of that cost.
Right.
So that entire four and a half percent will be on us.
On us, okay.
For the rest of the people who are in the EPO plan-
Right.
-so parent and child, husband and wife, and family-
Right.
-they pay 10%. We pay 90%. So we would be picking up 90% of that four and a half.
Okay.
And then on the PPO side, for individual, it's 85-15. And then for everybody else, it's 70-30.
Okay.
So we would be picking up 70.
Those amounts, right. Okay.
Yeah, so it varies depending on what type of coverage people have.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So, but we estimate that, or I've estimated that that's going to be about a $705,000 ticket for the active employees. And then for the retirees, which is on the next page, that's going to be about $150,000, $148,000, $150,000. And then the rest of that unemployment, those are all calculated figures. So that is essentially the operating budget. So if I get you to flip back, if you will, to page five, which is a summary of everything that we just went through. And if you look in the bottom right-hand corner of that page, you see the total request is $95,629,000 is our total request. And then if you flip back to page three, which is the revenue page, you can see how that's broken down by county, state, and then other. So essentially, if we were to leave this as it currently is, which we're not, we would be requesting from the county an additional $3.9 million over maintenance of effort.
Which is 2,260 more than last year's request?
Than last year's request.
I'm sorry, I didn't- 2,260 plus more than last year's 1.6 request. And a portion of that is increased doing business costs, but other things as well. Okay.
So is there any other questions on the current expense part of this budget? I don't hear any.
Well, so, but let's just, and I know you're probably getting ready to go to this place, but, so I think that I heard today, you decide that we want to take anything associated with the virtual academy out. Am I, am I right?
I think we're going to have to.
Yeah, okay, so that takes away almost 300,291, which is still in that 2.6 that Ms. Harlow was talking about. So we want to take that out. We were able to narrow some of the positions for the teachers, so at least two of those we were able to narrow. And I didn't hear narrowing of any other. So I'm trying to get a handle on-
We, we had a debate over the nurse at APA, and we never made a decision on that.
Right, but that, that's still in here, that 55.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Right. But we didn't continue that conversation is what we're going to do with that.
Well, everything's still in there. We haven't cut anything out of this request yet.
We haven't really cut anything except we said about the virtual.
Mm-hmm, virtual, which really wasn't a part of that 13 positions. That was a category. That 13 positions was two maintenance people, eight classroom teachers. Actually, it must have been 15. Two assistant principals, PIO reorganization, driver trainer, and a nurse. I recommend we remove the nurse request and the assistant principal request from APA and leave things there as they are. We have a process that the nurse is covered.
Is it principal request?
Oh, I thought it was an assistant. Yes, that.
What page are you on, Sharon?
I'm just looking at my notes, honey.
Oh, okay.
I'm not on a page.
Because I was trying to-
Looking at the new position notes.
Well, I just want to make something clear, like, because if, if you look at, you know, I, I agree with Sharon about not making the, the APA a principal versus a program manager. If you look at that change of title, we're, we're essentially adding $27,000 to change a name.
Yeah.
And I think that that's just not conducive to doing what's best for the, well, actually it's 27, because it would be, steps and COLA are on there also.
Right, 17 was just the, the position.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And in keeping with that-
So it's 56-03-4 is actually what the total would be coming out.
And there's going to be fixed charges and whatnot.
I thought that was with that.
Yeah, but you would take away the program manager salary, though.
The program manager salary would have to be added back in-
Pugged in, yes.
-to instruction.
To take that, right, right.
Yeah, we won't come up with an exact.
Oh, I'm sorry, because when I said 56, that was a school nurse.
So, yeah, so I recommend no changes to the APA staff at this time.
I would agree.
I agree.
I'm comfortable with the nursing process we have in place. And there's questions as to recognizing it as a school and not. And based on what we have there now, I don't support an increase in staff changes.
I need to ask a question about the SAT all day, the school day SAT, which I'm quite in favor for. However, it was brought to my attention that there are certain amount of minutes that testing, there's something kind of testing minute requirements. Will that affect that at all?
So, and, and I'll let Mr. P answer part of that, but we're working with the union right now. So part of that 2%, you know, less testing has to do with what we agree upon with our union. So if our union agrees that it needs to be more than 2.2% or 2.34 eighth grade, I think, then it'll be what we agree upon. And they're still meeting, so.
We are, we're still meeting. But that, that would take place during the school day.
Right. I think it's a great idea. I just, I didn't know if that was some kind of requirement with-
This is a SAT-
In school?
Yes.
That we're paying for?
We would. We'd pay for one administration.
We'd pay for PSAT?
We do pay for the PSAT. We do not pay for the SAT. So one, as you also know, that with the college and career readiness, that the SAT is a measurement that's used as part of college and career readiness, depending upon the score, as well as it also can serve as a waiver of English 12, depending on what the child scores on the English and writing portion of that. There are many districts that, that offer that during the day. That is a, that is a huge-
It's an incentive.
It is. We did it in my last district, and we captured a lot of students who would not otherwise have taken that test.
That's exactly right.
I agree.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
That's in line with what we should be doing.
Right, that's 100% for the kids.
Right, exactly.
I just have a question for you, Dr. Kane, is on these positions, and you always keep staring at them, and 35 positions were presented to you, and you came up with these 12 as your highest priority of the 35.
No, we came up with six. You're talking about teachers, or you're looking at a bunch of other things other than teachers?
The 35 was teacher requests.
I'm sorry, 35 was ju, no, 35 was positions total, right? And you've submitted 12 here.
No, six teachers.
Six teachers.
The others are other things.
Two assistant principals.
Right, no, no, I'm talking about that. Okay, so that, basically, do you know what the teaching staffs they presented, the principals, they, about?
Yeah.
This is what they presented.
They presented a lot more than what, we narrowed before we came to you.
You narrowed it, okay.
So we narrowed to what we thought we might be able to justify, right?
Manette Canard.
And so even, and even in narrowing from when we first presented this to now, we've been able to take off two. So as we continue to work with schools and we continue to work with scheduling, we really are looking closely at, you know, reallocating where we can rather than making a request for new money.
Right.
Well, my, the thing I'm dealing is if we're talking about the, the changes to the APA, that was a higher priority of, of all of those things that were submitted to you, all positions. APA was one of them that you thought was-
It was, it was a priority. I certainly respect the comments that have been brought about as we have these conversations. And while it absolutely does present an opportunity, you know, for revenue, and it does present an opportunity to bring students into our school district that are not currently there, and it does present, present an opportunity to alter some, to offer some alternatives for students we currently enroll. If this is not the right time for it, we have to weigh those, that's part of the work of this group. We have to weigh the priorities that we've set. And it sounds to me as if this one is not making the, one of the top priorities at this time.
So the anchor points was where we were going to have a lot of the virtual academy. Okay, so I can, then it's easier to see why we don't need-
That was two.
Right.
Two position that we-
That would have been two teachers.
Could remove. So it was really eight, including virtual academy. Take virtual academy away, we're at our six that we pared down from the 35, down to six. Canard and Stevensville Middle have been taken care of. And we're at computer sciences at Queen Anne's County High School, English slash social studies at Queen Anne's County High School, and Kent Island Elementary, a position, Centerville Middle, a position.
Right, right.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. So-
I was thinking about the anchors point. That's another reason not to up-
Anchor's point wasn't in there.
I'm looking at, I'm going to talk about that.
No, she's, she's talking about-
I'm talking about anchor's point. Because we're talking right now about getting rid of the anchor's point initiative for this year.
Right.
I think it's easier justified if we're not doing the virtual also. That was an additional responsibility.
And that was about, that was about the virtual academy.
Right.
So not just teachers.
Right.
Right.
And I agree we changed that, too.
I, I recommend that we leave the teacher specialists as teacher specialists and not make them assistant principals.
I, I agree. I concur. Jen, thank you.
I do, too.
But we had discussed putting two at Kent Island High School.
No, one at Kent Island.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Additional at Kent Island, one at Queen Anne's.
One at Queen Anne's. I support that.
No, I don't. Not at Queen Anne's County High School.
Not at Queen Anne's, at Kent Island.
At Kent Island.
Yes, yes. Team supports only one. That was my notes of the old meeting.
Because it seemed, I think in our discussion, we talked about how that was more equitable because one of the assistant principals is at the, at the extension.
Exactly.
So that still gives two at the main building, and then two up here at the, at Queen Anne's.
Right.
And then I'm assuming, and, and this is an assumption, so, that if that annex would not be needed anymore, which is highly unlikely, would then we take one of the assistant principal, like, and put them in a different position to keep two and two? Or, I mean, how would that work?
I think you could make that part of the analysis we're going to be doing about moving and getting rid of that.
Right. I think we need to look at that because then, again, we'll be out of equity-
And that's like a $100,000 piece.
Right, right.
Exactly.
Would be great. There's a lot of things I think you could find savings by getting ninth grade over to high school. So, I mean, they were going to be analyzing that.
Right, yeah.
How many, how many students are in ninth grade at Kent Island High School? Three hundred.
I believe it's 325, yeah, 325, 315.
So there is just not the room at Kent Island High School to have those students there?
Not now.
Every room is, so maybe in the future, we need to look to building on to that high school, like we are at Graysonville, to house those students, so that they have the high school experience, like all ninth graders have the high school experience. And they're in their school.
We have one less assistant principal.
And then we have that, that's right, exactly.
And the scheduling issue is a nightmare, them trying to get bus, they have extra buses-
That's right.
-that take them over to the high school.
Because they have to go over there to do certain classes, that's right.
They go over, right, certain classes during the day.
So that should probably be a future.
All of them are transported over there at the end of the day, so all the buses are-
Except for about 100 or so.
Yeah, they're still in.
So that's probably something that should be a future item.
Not even to say, like, the nurse at Matta Peak Middle has to take on that extra 300 kids, too.
Right, 300 students, yeah.
A lot of little things that we could actually articulate as savings.
If you did that, yeah.
We need that analysis.
So that is something that we need to think about in the future, is, is adding on a, another portion, just like we have at Graysonville, for ninth grade students.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So where, so what did we decide on for that?
Keeping Kent Island High School.
Kent Island will have one.
Queen Anne's will not. So that's about $100,000 savings.
And then as far as the other positions, I'm in favor of those four that are still on the table.
Which ones are there?
Computer sciences at Queen Anne's County High School.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
English, social studies, Centerville Middle, and Kent Island Elementary, those four positions.
Absolutely.
So we actually had 35 requested, got it down to eight, and we have reduced that to four.
Absolutely.
So maintenance staff, after, we're talking 20 years. Kent Island was built in 98. This is 18. 20 years without increasing an electrician. I mean, really?
Yeah, that needs to be done.
That's crazy. I think we really need to get that maintenance in there.
I think, I, I think we need to look at, as well, is adding on this whole PIO department. This may not be the time to add $168,000 to a department when we're cutting teacher, cutting, cutting staff out of our budget-
Cutting requested positions.
-that directly impact students and adding a whole department at the Board of Ed.
Mm-hmm.
I wonder, though, my, one thing I thought about this reorganization is if they, if we didn't actually create a, a person in charge of two people, basically, if we just beefed up the responsibilities and the salary of the person that would be doing, say, Geneva's old job.
Or even both positions.
It'll still involve, or maybe even both. It'll still involve increase, few increases, but not to the tune of $125,000 plus.
So you want to make a, a recommendation? So are you saying?
You do have a position there that's being paid for. But to up the, the type of person that goes into that, you know, make it a higher position-
Okay.
-with more, with the more responsibility that is being done. Somehow, I would look at that.
Would that be the communication specialist?
Right.
Because then maybe you could actually recruit someone with higher qualifications than what it currently has to handle all that.
But not top director level.
But not an additional to director over two people.
I mean, because essentially, right now, what is being proposed is an executive position. And I, I can't support executive level position when we can't, that isn't going to directly impact students. You know, my first, my first concern is every, every person that is important is going to, in my opinion, starts at the top with who directly- is important is going to, in my opinion, starts at the top with who directly impacts our students daily, and, and adding a, a whole department, I think we, number one, we will create a complete moral discontent, or morale discontent with staff by saying, we're not sure we can fund, you know, you know, salaries, but we're gonna, we're gonna add a, a branch to the, to the Board of Ed, to the central office. I, I think, I think also we've been brought into criticism from the county about adding more positions at central office versus out into our schools.
Absolutely.
Specifically high level.
Right.
Executive positions.
Right.
Or high cost positions. That's been reiterated many, many, many times, sometimes not with a lot of basis and other times with a lot of basis. So, you know, just because they thought we did, didn't mean we did, but there's times we have. And it does come under quite a bit of criticism.
The other thing is.
But if we need it, that's criticism that we have to, you know, deal with, I'm sorry.
Well, of course, if we really did need it, then it is basically a supervisory position of two people.
Right.
And I, I mean, other than say, Robyn, I don't know how many people she supervises, but she's got a, you know, she does a lot of the operational work herself. So when you have a supervisor over just two people, that is always, like in federal government, that is something you don't get.
Right, it's frowned upon.
It's a waste, yeah.
Like that without, with that number of people.
I'm trying, and I, I know that I have seen it on here, Robyn, the cost of the, the multimedia specialist and the communication specialist. I, I thought that they were on here on these broken down sheets.
It is.
Is it? Where is it?
Right at the top.
Well, it would be Communication Specialist reorganization is eighteen thousand one oh four, to bring it up to sixty, I think, wasn't it? And then the PIO Multimedia Specialist is seven hundred and sixty-one.
I actually feel that sixty is a little high even.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, it's a forty thousand dollar position.
Yep.
Without going into what each individual, one of us think we need, if our next position is at sixty-eight, I think we're jumping ahead to sixty.
Way too far, too far.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's quite a.
And our whole idea is to keep the department.
When you look at a percentage increase, that's quite a.
Or in level, yes, yes.
Quite a large.
Is there a way that we can kind of sort of expedite, maybe mark looking at duties and responsibilities in those positions and make a reasonable recommendation on what they should be paid to do that? Because is our, human resources able to do that?
And that is, that's what we did already. So we did do that already. So, but what I'm understanding is leave the structure as it is. However, for the communication specialist, take a look at what that person, how we assign responsibilities for that position and perhaps upgrade that position so that we can attract a desirable candidate for that one.
That, and I'd actually like to see job description on both, in that whole department, on what the multimedia specialist's responsibilities are.
We gave you that.
But now, that, that was based on the PIO reorganization and new positions. If we're gonna change on to.
So when I gave you the.
I, I have it, I just don't have it with me.
This one, yeah.
But see, that's not going to be indicative of what we are talking about.
This one, yes. Yeah.
Going to. This is what it was going to be for we to reorganize the department and duties and titles.
Right, so I would.
We're kind of backing off on this sum.
Would the job still be the same?
That's what we need to do.
Would the communication specialist and the multimedia specialist, would they be the same?
Keep in mind, those are different names now.
Right, so we're just gonna take out the multimedia specialist altogether.
Okay. Okay.
Right.
No, what do you mean, we're taking out the multimedia specialist?
We're eliminating that.
No, we need a multimedia specialist.
Okay, that's not what.
I'm talking about getting the person over top.
I would recommend, yeah, I'm a multimedia specialist.
Oh, I was talking about the, the director of PIO is what we were taking out.
That position is called PIO Coordinator.
PIO, so we're, yes, we're eliminating PIO.
Which was never created yet.
Right, right. My recommendation is we leave the titles the way they currently are.
That's what we currently have.
Okay, well, okay, let me make myself clear. What I was recommending is, is we do not have a PIO director in charge of two people. We keep communication specialists, we keep multimedia specialists. My recommendation is to eliminate PIO as a director, which was creating an executive position of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so let me tell you what we have now.
Okay.
And what I believe you're asking, just because I think there's confusion.
Okay.
So we currently have a PIO coordinator and a communication specialist. The recommendation was to upgrade that PIO coordinator to a director and then keep a communication specialist and add a multimedia specialist.
Correct.
What you're asking is that we eliminate that multi, because that was the new one.
No, I, no, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that.
I think, I think, I'm looking at, we don't have an organizational chart from 2016, but we do clearly have a list of all of our positions, and they start at the superintendent level and they go all the way down through all of our departments. And on the last page of that, our communication, our Office of Public Information listed a public information officer, which was a position that we haven't decided to get rid of or change name, but that was on the table, and a communication specialist. My recommendation is we leave it the way it was.
And you have two org charts there. You have FY seventeen, and you have a FY, I'm sorry, you have a FY eighteen, and you have a FY nineteen. That was the proposed one.
But those are different from what we started with prior to making adjustments.
The FY eighteen is what we have now.
And, and that shows an interim position and changes to the department as it was before Ms. Harrison left and before any changes were made.
It shows that, yeah.
Prior to, we had a public information officer.
And a communication specialist.
And a communication specialist. My recommendation is we leave this department intact the way it was, but we examine the duties for each.
Yeah, that's what I was.
And if we determine that there's an improvement needed in any pay for the communication specialist, because that's the one that's on the table, then we can discuss that. I'm objectional, objection, I object to the sixty. I feel that's too high.
Eliminates the media specialist, the multimedia specialist, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Which was a change, which was a change.
Right.
We're just leaving it alone.
Leaving it alone.
Yes.
Title wise, but examine jobs.
But in the budget, we have to take that out of the budget because it was changed in the budget.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But let's be clear, that's not what you were saying.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to upgrade that position to accommodate the extra duties that you felt were going to be done by another whole position.
Correct, so it's not leaving it alone because your conversation was that the, the salary may be increased.
Right.
Is that what you heard?
I think so.
But not to the tune of a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Right.
Right, right. I, I kind of understand what everybody's saying.
But we also, in that scenario, are talking different job titles.
Yeah, right, the titles are what's confusing.
We're just talking different titles, I think.
I'm not.
And you can call it whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, to me it doesn't matter, but I get what you're saying.
The titles stay the same.
Stay the same.
Dr. Kane, may I ask a question?
Are we?
We're, we're undertaking a salary study, compensation classification. That work should be done in three to four months. Is that an adequate timeframe?
Three or four months?
No. For the budget?
No, for, for this question.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if we're gonna, we've got to make some decision about what to pay that position.
Right.
The communication specialist.
Okay.
Right, and, and that work was done.
Yeah, that's right.
So that's why I'm saying, that's okay, with the work that was done.
That number will come down, but not disappear.
So, so prior to any discussion, it was in the forty range, and on the table with the changes, it was in the sixty range. And are we asking those job duties be reevaluated in the package that you gave us, and then we can come up with a salary level?
Yeah, let's see what they come up with, that's what I said.
Yes, so these will go away.
It's not a compromise.
Director of Community Relationships and Communications, but the titles will stay the same as they were in 2016 and most of 2017. They just recently changed.
We're gonna use the, keep the driver trainer in the real thing too.
Yeah, I was okay with all that.
Yeah, I was fine with that. So I think that's it for the new positions away.
Two maintenance people?
So did, did we say that? We said electrician, so we're all right with the upper, the carpenter as well?
Yeah, the two positions in that department.
I'm okay with the two maintenance positions and the driver trainer.
Yeah, I was okay with that too.
So we got electrician, carpenter, transportation, driver trainer.
Right. And then the teaching staff, additional chief, chiefing staff.
Oh, okay. I just didn't know what it was, okay.
I have a question, I just asked Dr. Kane about it. If anyone saw this at the back of their paper here.
I did.
For the position as deputy superintendent, if you could explain that to us.
Yeah, so we didn't get to any of the, the things that I gave to you last time.
No, we didn't, we didn't.
So the recommendation here is to change the job title, not the job, the responsibilities or the salary, all of the things that are, are right now, stay the same. And that is out of respect for the work that actually is done and the experiences that, that person in that position has had. So the, the situation in Queen Anne's County is similar to situations in some other districts that have a deputy superintendent, and that is that he works right hand with me and he speaks on my behalf, and if I'm not there, he's not, he's there. So it is really almost like a co-responsibility in addition to all of the academics for curriculum instruction and special education and counseling, student services and all of those kinds of things, which are included in that. So it's not a fiscal impact, but it changes the job title.
Does the job title affect how the state views us? No?
No.
Okay.
And in here, again, again, it has direct support to the district's fifteen schools. It should only say fourteen schools.
So my only question is, in looking over, unfortunately, our sister counties do not do a good job of producing a organizational chart or putting it online, so I was at a little bit of a disadvantage and had to go out into the bigger state of Maryland. And I see deputy assistant superintendents clearly under an assistant superintendent. So if we're going to.
Under?
Mm-hmm.
Under superintendent.
If you look at FY nineteen.
Under superintendents, I'm sorry, yes, 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 yes.
Right, right.
Montgomery County Superintendent of Schools, and then under that, a deputy, and then some officers, and below that, directors. Why would we put our assistant superintendent or deputy superintendent on the same line as our directors as opposed to out as direct support to you?
Oh, I see what you're saying on the, on the organizational chart.
It's all on the same line across the board.
And it should, it should, it really should be.
It should have been up there.
Out there from you.
It should be like you have Jackie there, it should be here.
Well.
And they may not.
It, it really should fall.
Or underneath its own self.
There you go, right.
Its own self, but directly to you.
So the reason that it's there like it is, is because all of those positions report directly to me.
Right.
And I didn't put him over that because those directors.
I'm okay with that, without that line to the directors, but I felt that that was not in keeping with the other positions.
It's in keeping organizationally about regarding who reports to whom.
Yes, yes, but we can do that with lines and still show.
I think that that needs to definitely go under there and not here.
It's sometimes reflected in a larger box.
And some people, some counties do have their line of, line of communication set up different. I don't have a problem with how you determine that.
So a lot of times in larger districts, all of those folks do report to the deputy.
To him and to you, directly through him.
Through him.
I don't care that we leave that, I'm, I'm fine leaving that up to you, but I felt like it was not in keeping with the position to be along the line of a director.
This isn't something we need to vote on anyway, it's your decision.
I was, I just wanted to, yeah, give you all the information.
But because there was a job description and a change, there's some money involved, I felt that that needed some discussion.
I guess this would be then off topic of budget, yeah.
Well, there was money involved in this change.
Well, I brought it up because I keep pulling it out of my, out of my pack, so.
Not, not changing his name from deputy to assistant.
It doesn't change salary or anything like that.
That's just his cola, that's just his step and cola.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So let's get back on to the budget part of this.
All right, so we had no change to APA staff, one APA at Ken Island High School. We keep the electrician, carpenter, driver trainer out of maintenance. We're gonna do four point zero teachers in the multiple schools that we named before. And no program manager, two principal for Anchor Points. Take out the multimedia specialist, keep the same titles that we have currently in PIO office, and rework the responsibilities of the communication specialist.
Correct. Okay, and then the maintenance man, did you mention that?
Yes.
And the driver trainer was mentioned?
Yes.
Okay, that's everything.
That was all under, under maintenance.
Hey, the one question I have is hourly wage improvements throughout here. There was a lot of different places where we had added.
I, I did have.
It's almost we need to, though. I, I don't really have a problem with that because I feel like it's just something needed. We, we have to at least go to the commissioners and ask for that. I mean, we have to stay at some point.
Our salary change.
Well, I had something, I, I did have a question about mileage or air.
Hold on, Beverly's asking about it.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead while I.
Yeah, and what Jen was saying, my question is, are there any areas here that we're having a hard time hiring people for? And I know we are for substitutes, but how about everything else? I mean, that way we can justify the upping the salary for whoever we're having a hard time getting, basically, would be.
Well, I think we're addressing all the hourly people that we're having difficulty recruiting, and the rest of the folks are collectively bargained, and we're trying to approach that through the compensation and classification study.
Are we having any trouble getting people for those positions?
For, for some of the collectively bargained positions?
Yeah, some of the hourlies, some of the hourlies. I mean, to an extent where we could justify that to the commissioners.
The hourlies we are addressing. We have hourly, five-hour pair positions that are tough to get, home hospital teachers, substitute teachers, some bus driver assistants, another one.
Tutors.
Tutors, yeah, Title I tutors.
The tutors and the five-hour pairs, we get them, but they turn over quickly because they're gonna, they find another job that they're gonna make.
Real fast.
It's, it's difficult work. It's, it's very, it's very challenging, and it takes a certain kind of a person with a really big heart, so.
The substitutes and the home hospital teachers, we're just having trouble getting them to commit to doing those jobs.
And, you know, unemployment is at a long time low. It's just a difficult time in the labor market, so we've got to appeal to them and, and we've got to improve our, our offering.
I mean, my recommendation is we go ahead with that on all of them, but then if we push comes to shove later, we'd have to look a little closer at it if we don't get what we want from the commissioners.
Right.
I'm okay with going ahead, initial cut with that. My job, my idea.
The initial cut to what? I'm sorry.
What, what, what they ask for that, and keeping those in there.
What they request.
Keeping them in there, what the staff recommends. So just keeping in mind, it might be something we might have to approach later.
And please remember that many of these folks like substitute teachers haven't had an increase in like ten years.
Yeah.
Right.
And they're getting exhausted.
Exactly.
So we have, it's our responsibility to do something.
And just to, to get more qualified subs, you know, as well.
No, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I think I know what I need to do for next meeting, which is next Wednesday. I'll rework these numbers, put together a new book. I'll let you see what that looks like. Dr. Kane?
I just want to be sure that I'm clear on a couple of other things. Move forward with S A, School Day S A T?
Yes.
Move forward with early college academy dual enrollment, that increase.
Yes.
We already had conversation about band uniform, remove virtual academy.
Yes.
And so the next will reflect all of those decisions that were made today. And then, you know, we, we have to start to engage in the unpleasant conversation about what to do, right? So that we are, as we said from the beginning, going to be transparent with the public should we not get the funding that we need so that people are not blindsided about what we have to do.
Right.
And I've said on more than one occasion, we are going to find one point four million dollars in this budget without it affecting positions.
That was my question.
Say that again.
Are we going to be able to?
We will not find one-point-four million dollars in this budget without it impacting positions. There's not enough materials or programs to cut.
So, actually, am I safe in saying that M O E will not satisfy our salary increases that we expect we're going to incur?
Healthcare, salary.
Cola.
Right.
Steps.
Exactly, exactly. And we're talking at a minimal level here.
Greg, we encountered that last year as well.
We may need one-point-four million.
We were short as well in salary money.
Ideas of reductions or initiatives.
Because of M O E.
Like your pay-to-play.
Family being at the level it works.
I think that, yeah, if, if next week, Dr. Kane, if you and your staff could come up with what you would think is your, you know, places that we would have to, and I know we were giving that in the presentation on the slide, but I think that there might even be more needed.
Yeah, because there are only four things.
So, right, so if you, right, and so, honest to goodness, we have gone through and gone through and looked at what you did last year, and we had a long list of things, and we say, okay, so we've taken care of this, we've taken care of that.
Right.
So the only things, and these are so minimal, when you start talking about, you know, fifteen thousand dollars and pay-to-play, you know, for a dollar or something like that.
That's right.
It's so very minimal, you know, so we certainly did talk about, you know, asking our folks who have EPO individual to pay a portion of, just like everybody else pays a portion of their health insurance, that's gonna get us a, a certain dollar amount. And then the other, the only other thing that we can look at.
But that's a negotiated item, is it not?
Yes, it is, right.
It is, so that one, we really can't count on.
We, we can't.
No.
And then the only thing that was, is within our control is staffing.
Right.
That's F T Es.
Well, what we could do, though, is get some figures on if we made ninety, ten.
We have that.
Or eight, yeah, that kind of thing. Or what is eighty, twenty, and what is, you know, and it, and what's the impact if, if, I hate, I don't know if you can estimate this, but what if we just had it impact new hires or something? That way, there's.
Again, though, Beverly, those are negoti, that's something that Mark's gonna have to take to, to the, the union to negotiate.
And it's still not gonna make up our deficit.
We're not gonna have negotiations done by the budget, obviously, so.
M O E will not.
You know what I mean?
But what we do with our, you know, our salary increases, we're not gonna have that agreed to either.
Correct, and that one, the figure that we used was an estimate.
I just want to get an idea on the numbers.
And, and Dr. Kane, is, is very clear, we almost have three things here. M O E, and what it will and will not cover, what our requ, our needs for our staff are, and everything else that we leave in.
Right.
And when we start taking out some of the things we've talked about, they're minimal at best, and we're still faced with two of our categories. M O E only covering X amount of dollars not to include or exceed our needs on salary and requirements there.
Right.
So, we're not making up what we need to make up.
Exactly. And I mean, just.
And that's all we can tell them.
Right.
Honestly, tell them that this is not gonna meet our salary requirements.
So, I mean, you know, it's, I just bring it up just so that we're prepared to start having that conversation, you know, we just have to be.
That's a conversation we can have. If we went forward with the whole budget as modified today, that conversation would be talking points for the teachers to come out to the areas.
Exactly.
For us to come out.
Right, that's right.
And that's the kind of stuff.
And so, you know.
They're, they're planning to come.
They're, they're waiting for us to have agreement here about what you want to present to commissioners, and then.
I think our biggest impact to get people out at those budget meetings are exactly if, if we're only funded in M O E, and these are the things that are gonna have to get cut. That's where you're gonna get the population of teachers, communities, you know, taxpayers, everybody's, that will impact, make the biggest impact on, on, on people coming out for those budget hearings.
Unfortunately, the budget hearing is after they've made their determination of dollar amount.